Okay. Good morning. Today is Monday, January thirteenth, twenty twenty. And I called the Commissioner's Board to order. Today we have Chris Condit from Hillside Christian Leadership Vacation. So if you'll please stand, remain standing.
Thank you to all of you for your service to our city workers. Your wise and loving Father, we thank you on behalf of all those who are gathered here today. Thank you for the many and abundant blessings, for the gift of life that we have and the callings that you have given each of us. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. God, we thank you for the freedoms that we have in this country and may we be reminded that they come with responsibility and cost. God, I want to pray your blessing over this meeting today, these governing authorities that are meeting here. And God, we thank you that you have established them, as you say in Scripture, and that we are to obey them and the laws and the guidelines that they set. So God, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this council that's gathering today. God, give them wisdom and governing, and God, give them a sense of welfare and the true needs of our people. Give them a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, for confidence in what is good and fitting for the community, and God, for personal peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. God, I pray for the agenda that's set before them today. Give them an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around Amarillo and the taxes being handled. God, it's in your son's name that we pray. Amen.
... The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited in justice for all. I am Texas law, the President of the United States of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right, first thing on the agenda this morning is regular Michigan minutes on December twentieth, twenty nineteen. So recognize and continue vouchers to consider an act upon the approval and penance of vouchers processed by the county authority. It's going to carry the December eighteenth, twenty nineteen, and January eighth, twenty twenty. Check numbers one eight nine four four through one eight nine one four nine, the line transfer is one three three eight, two one three four five nine three million four hundred seventy-eight thousand fifty-one dollars forty-six cents. By motion.
Approve of the line transfers and checks numbers. Second.
Number two, quick question. Carrie, page twelve of thirty, check number one eight nine oh six three, these are our line items to HOK payments for the district courts project, roughly two hundred forty-five thousand. Can I get year-to-date spend on that, even if we don't have that today? You can just send that as a follow-up for that project. That's it. Yes, ma'am.
Number three, quarterly budget comparisons. Recognize the first quarter general fund budget comparison report. This call, you are not seeing anything.
Where, and I guess it's probably my fault, I can't find it. The, or the information about which.
I can see the category, it's under the sample service, and it ever is signatures. It's part of that sixty-nine thousand.
Still concerned about the amount that we're being charged.
I am too.
On removal double.
What are next steps to that then, Commissioner? I'm assuming that's per in the contract agreement, that's what we agreed to, the line amount. And then we talked about the last commissioners where there was spiking primary, JP's are ordering more autopsies. What are the next steps? Okay?
Some of it does. Some of that cost as well.
I agree with your concern, I just am interested in what you see as the next step to start to drive into.
Well, if it's, you know, it's got some point of digits and what the heck, you need to look at it. And I don't know, I know there's all this amount on the contract somehow, in the day, whatever. I just think it needs to be looked at. We gotta take it seriously.
Can we do that?
I think Chris is pretty good at houses. He arrived at a contract. Thank you.
Carrie, is there anything else that caught your attention this time around on this quarterly?
No, the only other thing that looks in the map is all our IT services, but that's because of the change in the process.
Anything else?
So recognize. I report the budget calendar for this year twenty-one to review proposed budget calendar. It is in your packet, it is very same as last year by opposition to others. But this is just to remind you that a whole vacation during this time, unless you can come back and run. Any changes or anything that you all want to see made?
Only thing I would, I would say is that if for any reason we have to go over the three and a half percent, that has to go on ballot in November, so you have to have so many days before empty announce that it's going to be on the ballot. I don't think this is a long period. But if we're committed to not for sure raising over three and a half percent, that's, that's a worry.
And then the only other concern, I would have just going into the budget cycle, in particular the first line item in May, when we start to distribute the memo and the process down to the departments for them to start to get their budget ready. Years ago, you know, we talked about zero-based budgeting and then why that would and would not work. So maybe there's a happy medium. I just, I guess in my mind, I can't imagine a budget cap, us going into budget like we normally do. And I think we need some type of guidance to the departments because this impact is a really significant impact. And I can't expect the departments to know how to interpret that, right? They need to know if you increase here, this means here and it rolls up, it would affect the aggregate. So I don't know maybe the right way to do that yet with the departments, but I don't think just emailing them their budget from last year and saying, "What changes out of the track?", it doesn't feel like the right way going into budgets this year. But you may have an opinion around that.
I would mean, yes, if there are processes that we can actually plan session.
But based on the revenue. I don't know, I guess, I guess there's the possibility we could do that. Do what? Maybe the work in the period. We're not happening, you are, we're done. Oh, in-house, yes. Okay, we can do that, just do that.
Who would leave that budget?
Oh, okay.
I just, going into that budget session, it is just like nothing we've ever experienced, so I can't.
Do we want to do it like at the end of April?
I am. Just when I pulled in the court on the fifth of March, we got the spring panel, Judge and Commissioners Conference. And one of the speakers, Mr. Jim Allison, will be talking about how this three and a half percent will affect our budgeting and the date, you know, timing and all that. So it's something we ought to be there.
Okay, all right, so we all do that, and we'll have a strategic plan meeting in April to get started.
Carrie, should we begin this?
All right, number five, insurance report pending. There's nothing that ageable. So what we got? Number six, IT update, to hear reporting of current status of IT budgets. Good morning.
Good morning, Judge, and Commissioner. I'll report this time in addition to the, 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 the routine. Like report that, I believe we've ordered the remaining equipment for the Grantis project, which is the camp of the system. All that equipment should work at the new building after that's up as well. It's in-person training, I have about twelve folks or so left, but I had multiple sessions this week already set up, so we'll get that knocked out. I've already trained the lens, new folks, and they were really, really good, we're talking about that for report. The metrics for Q four of last year, I will be emailing to you guys this Wednesday, so you can take a look at that. The, we're working on prepping the LEC for the upcoming server move with the BTR, which you guys prefer to as the backup server. And there's a few needs out there for catering and how to get addressed. Completed the encryption windows ten votes, all new machines, as I said, going out are encrypted. And Ben talks with Techshare and Spillman. It turns out that Spillman is willing to talk about having a two-way interface with the Techshare product, which is going to be, I think, helped a lot of folks out in accounting, like the SO. And we have another conference call between those folks on that topic this Thursday. The alternative to doing this, a two-way, what's called an API between these two products, is for IT to spin up a new server, build a custom database in-house, and that data grows and never goes away. And definitely the way to do this is in three parts. I also found out this process that Spillman already has an interface available with Autopsy, should it have designed. Met with Martin Potter County's primary managers to discuss changing the county backup solutions to something more robust and independent that includes features like air gapping. Air gapping means that the backup data isn't directly connected to the network. The reason that's important today is because more and more of the newer threats, like new strains of ransomware, attack the backups as well. So the idea is to have a good backup and having what's called an air gap in between. We'll have some information on that in a big session. Like to report that we have a new employee as a network administrator. His primary interest is actually security, so you'll be seeing his bright shining face on our app about. And to wrap up, I received the green light from THC Friday, move ahead with the catering for Julie's North area. So I expect we'll have that done within two weeks. And in the meantime, we'll go ahead and start putting things together for the next area, the next busiest area, which would probably be the county attorney's office.
Couple of questions, if I may. The training, the in-person training, this was the law that gave effect to the Commissioner Church brought up. You were working with the state to try and get credentials?
That's, that's on my list for this quarter, yes. And as it turns out, several requirements in that House bill stipulates are actually in the online training already. So my plan is to do a combination, private of the in-person training and the online training. So the Potter County employees have a very, very good training opportunity because the things that that House bill stipulates, I understand why they stipulated, but to protect the county's data, I think more is better.
And then we also talked about the disaster plan, any kind of ETA, and we'll have something to the board.
And it actually goes in combination with the servers that are going out to the LEC. So I would say quarter one, we'll have that in place and tested. So it's important to understand that a disaster recovery plan is proposed and drafted, and then has to be tested as adjustments are made. When they find things that don't work, we have to make adjustments. So that's, that's my goal for that. Additionally, I've been talking with a couple of department heads. Because of the way the county organized, it might not be a bad idea if I got some county department heads and made individual disaster recovery plans, just in the form of what do we do, what do we call, what's going on?
So when will we see a draft at the quarter?
Disaster recovery within Q.
Within Q, even the draft?
I can get a draft before that, sure.
I just, in case there's questions or comments, we're not your roadblock, is what I'm thinking.
Oh, okay, so let's say in the big room for a draft. And we'll have to schedule tests.
Have you mentioned an air gap product?
Yes, sir.
What are the costs of that product?
Well, there's actually two that we're looking at. One is a tape product, an updated tape product. Tape has been around for a long time. It's air gapped because the backup data on tape, once the backup's there, the tape is stored someplace else, so it can't be attacked. That, I'm waiting for quotes for both products. That is the lesser of two. It's expected that the tape that's going to be under twenty thousand. The other solution is a much newer, robust solution, and that's probably going to be six figures. Just, just guessing.
Are you saying that there's no way that report to be infected?
It, it, that's correct, like, just like the tapes. So once the backup data is on a tape and stored someplace, that can't be infected. And the way the other product works, it also has some security measures and metrics that it offers as well. What it does, without going into too much detail, is when a backup is being made, it opens up access to what it needs to get that data, it copies the data, and it forwards it. And I'll have, I'll have additional information on that.
Dan?
Number seven, elections to consider an act upon the order of appointing early voting election judges, establishing hours of operation for early voting voting places, and establishing the maximum number of clerks for the March third, the twenty twenty primary election. And B, to consider an act upon the order of appointing early voting ballot board judge and signature verification committee judge, and establishing the maximum number of clerks in the ballot board and signature verification committee for the March third, twenty twenty primary election. And to consider an act upon the order of appointing officers for central county station for March third, twenty twenty.
This is just to see if he can read that.
I think this one.
Oh, there's a D.
There is.
You want me to read the D too?
Let's wait.
Okay. I'll let you do the A.
Okay, these are orders that the board does need to sign. And on the order of appointing early voting election judges, et cetera, nothing is different substantially. I've met with the party chairs and primarily to discuss the weekend hours. And they recommended not to read both Saturday and Sunday for branch locations, so that it's easier to communicate with anybody of the community, since they divide on Sunday, which we have sometimes done in class. And so they have approved this, and now it's a matter of you guys looking at it. Of importance is that this is an expense that Potter County pays, where we pay for all of our early voting, all of the election workers for that, and all of the hours for that. So some of these hours are mandated by law, and some of these are, as much as any may depend significantly, so that we don't have to do seven to seven at every side. And so, so both the party chairs agree that this would be an adequate number of hours for their projects. How does this compare to Randall, to the primary? I know we try to match as best as we can, since we're a city divided by two counties. I do not know, and I haven't, haven't seen theirs. I know that the Monday and Fridays will be the same, the weekends, I do not know. Sometimes their, their location, the annex here, may have longer hours on Saturday, for to reach their Amarillo.
Well, then, on the order of appointing early voting election judges, first paragraph says, "By the commanders' court, here are orders following with regard to the March third, twenty twenty, joint primary runoff election." Is that a wrong, is that a mistake? Should be.
Just, yes, it should be. But I'm looking, I was in the paragraph, yes, I will change that.
Exactly, runoff election, just primary election.
Yes. Do you read these things? Yes. So I will. That can be corrected.
I move we approve the order of appointing early voting election judges, establishing hours of operation for early voting voting places, and establish the maximum number of clerks for the March third, twenty twenty, joint primary election.
The next one is the early voting ballot board and signature verification committee. And at this point, I'm anticipating the need for the signature verification committee. We have not seen a mass bailout yet for the early voting absentee voting, although we just anticipate that that's going to happen at any given time. And so we're gearing up for that. And just based off of previous primaries, we do feel like we'll be needing for it.
And there are another orders you want?
Yeah, oh yeah, let's keep on going. Order of appointing officers for central county station, they are the same, so it has to make the difference by the party chairs. I make a motion, I'm sorry. I make a motion that we approve the order of appointing early voting ballot board judge and signature verification committee judge, establishing the maximum number of clerks, the ballot board, and signature verification committee for the March third, twenty twenty, joint primary election, and to approve the central county station for the March third, twenty twenty, election as presented.
Second. So I think both here are being said.
Yes, sir.
Second motion, second on the table. And then B, to consider an act upon election day voting locations for the joint primary election, March third, twenty twenty, locations include the change from Bell Avenue and Church of Christ to Casey Carpet One.
Yes, Bell Avenue, you know, it is not easy, and we have thought our sites would stay with us as election day or early voting sites. And Bell Avenue opted to, to back out at this point. And we had a meeting of the county election board, and which includes the two party chairs unanimously, they agreed that Casey Carpet One would be a great replacement for that. We need to keep the location in precinct one to keep everything balanced as it needs to be. Casey is an early voting site. They have, Dusty has assured me that in a busy election, he's going to give us more space there because we would anticipate that we would have a good number of people there. While it is fairly close to Grace Community Church, those two are in close proximity to each other. I think it will actually be a positive because sometimes we do end up with very long lines at Grace, and this will also give a good voting alternative to folks that may be going to that location.
I move we approve the vote centers for the Potter County area locations, election day, March third, twenty twenty.
Second. I have a motion, second on February.
Bring word, my man.
Yeah. And then number eight, adoption of voting system for May second, twenty twenty election. To approve and sign a resolution to adopt the Hart Inter-Civic Eastlake voting system leased by the city, by the city, cities may set in twenty twenty on election.
Yes, this is a for one election only. We are doing the city's election. We are unable to use, we don't have the equipment to use our verity system. The state of Texas has approved the use of the Eastlake. The city of Amarillo is leasing enough of the Eastlake. This is the first cousin, the predecessor to what we're using now, so there will be a lot of similarities, but it's actually what they were using in Randall County prior to upgrading to the Verity Touch. So according to state law, you guys have to adopt it, and you can do it by resolution, and you may do it for just this one election. City of Amarillo has also adopted it, so we are the final part of this. We will be receiving the election document February the third, and they do have to come and train us on it because it's not our first link. But we're not concerned about it because obviously this is a first cousin of what we're using now. For the Potter County voters, it will be a little different because you remember it has a wheel. So we've been using touchscreens for some time, so our voters will see a little bit of the difference. But this particular city bond election will have one measure on it, so it's not complicated where you have to go to many, many pages and figure something out. So this is specifically for Pacific Center initiative? This is the May election? We don't have enough equipment to host that, and so the city is bringing in more equipment to offset that in addition to ours? Or is this completely replacing? Completely replaces it. And see, and ours cannot be used because after any given election, our equipment that we use has to sit for sixty days, just in case there was any kind of a court challenge. So we can't recycle it. And so while we could technically use it for a May second election, I think that would be barely, no, we actually wouldn't be in there because of early voting. But we would be able to do it between the two, so that's why we could not use what we currently have. And what we currently have is not available from lease from the parent company. It would have been, it would have been available for purchase, but that would have been a frivolous decision on the part of the arson council. So they didn't, they went as cost-effective as possible. So let's take that thought a step further. So we'll get the equipment, it will retain in our possession, get the vote done, and then it will continue to retain in our possession for X amount of days after, in case, certain pieces of it will, yes, that is correct, in case there are questions. And then obviously, voting in a global sense has gotten a lot of national attention. Since this is not our host system, that we have a very confident structure around technology and security and safety, all of these national conversations, how do we? The one, the good thing is this, this particular equipment is the two thousand fourteen, fifteen version of the Eastlake, so it's not the old two thousand five version. So it is, it is just fine with that. It is certified by the state of Texas. And one of the big questions we asked is, what if there is a recap? What will that look like? And so we are very comfortable with the internal assistance of this and how we would verify the account was, was done accurately. So I think maybe a to-do, and certainly security and safety and voting and all of that goes in a big lump sum. I think we probably need a debrief with the court and IT specifically, and if we can't do that in public court for the security of making sure that stays here, you need to speak to us individually to help us understand that those votes will be secure. It's just, it's not our host system, so I'm naturally a little shy about that. Yes, and I would like to do that in private, we do try to keep election security. Secure, obviously. You know, the ins and outs of it. Sure. Secure. Yeah, I just want to make sure that we individually are confident about that, since we're individually signing this resolution, right? We're accountable for that, so we can speak to that. Yes. Yes. And, and when they do come to train us, you would be more than welcome to come and talk to their experts as well. Okay, okay?
I move we approve the use of the Hart Inter-Civic Eastlake voting system for the city of Amarillo on election, May two, twenty twenty, August.
Motion, second on February. Thank you. All right, thank you. Reverend Bern Van to consider an act upon proposed birthday from one fourteen, twenty twenty, to four twelve, twenty twenty. Good morning.
Morning.
It's time.
It's time to go ahead and do it. Our drowning index factors are not changing the way the fuels are changing, and it lets do mostly the pre-seared fuel. So our activity is picked up in the fact that we've run most of the legal burns. Pretty much tells me that we need to go ahead and.
How is our index, our KBDI?
It's like a 127. It's not going to make it, and it's not accurate for our.
Is there anything we should be using that's more accurate than that? That's just what the state or the.
It's just, it's just what the state uses, and unfortunately, it's more global than anything. It's looking at the entire Texas panhandle, and we're, because we're sitting in the middle of it, generally we have a bullseye on us for when the, where the wildfire activity's picking up, so it hasn't changed in three weeks. And, you know, I don't know why that factor is, because we've certainly dried out a lot. Moisture has been predicted, but it hasn't happened, so I'm not relying on the KBDI right now for our fire activity. We're under elevated fire weather today as it is, and we've been, we've been coughing for the last two weeks, so.
I move to approve the argument presented, 13, 2020 through 4/12/2020.
Second.
I have a motion, second on favor. Five zero, thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Guys, I tell you guys, y'all pay sure you get that on our, our website. We need to relay that to you so much, too. Number 10, tax abatement application to consider conditional exceptions. An application for tax abatement that will be subject to approval and execution on a later date. Gold Mountain Renewables, Jim Sobieski, Jamie Sobieski, and Chris Jensen. Good morning.
Good morning, Judge, Messrs. Probably saying things yet. Sure. Thank you very much for your time here today. My name is Chris Jensen, I'm attorney with Ross Rayor Smith, on behalf of Gold Mountain Renewables. We're here to discuss what we think is a mutually beneficial project for Gold Mountain Renewables as well as Potter County. At the end of our presentation, and we're going to give an opportunity for Q and A as well, we're hoping that we would get a motion and approval for the conditional acceptance of an application for tax abatement, subject to abatement agreement and establishment of a tax reimbursement. So today with me, we have Jim Sobieski, who's right behind me. He is a trustee of the Sobieski Trust, which is the sole member of Gold Mountain Renewables. His children, Jamie and Abby, are the other trustees of that trust. The Sobieski Trust owns the land on which Gold Mountain Renewables is developing a renewable energy project that brings us here today. Jamie Sobieski is also with us. He is the manager of Gold Mountain Renewables. Also with us is Mike Frye. He is a senior property tax consultant and director of K and E Andrews, whose primary focus is valuation and economic incentives in the energy sector. And Jim will describe the property, the project, the abatement requested, and the benefit to Potter County. Jim, and I'll get this set up when you come up. That was not an intentional plug.
That's for Sobieski, but.
Yeah, we'll say that.
Good morning, Your Honor. Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning. I have three hours, please.
I'm not asking a good time.
So the Sobieski family has been involved with ranchland in Texas Panhandle since deceased wife's grandfather, William Henry Bush, purchased the ranch in 1894 from his father-in-law, Joseph Gooden, who was one of the inventors of barbed wire. So just push this button.
Right, yes, sir.
There we go. So here's a picture of the ranch, and we provide flowers to most of the local forests, as you can imagine. So we're, the land that we're talking about is ranchland, and it has on it, in the background, let's see if I can. Anyway, government numbers showing in the background, that's the Foddy Mason, and my wife Carol, that was one of her favorite spots, and so we named the limited liability company, Gold Mountain Renewables, as her honor and project and solar project for Carol, so. Property is owned for agricultural use, and so in 2019, the property taxes were $3,240. The project that we're talking about will cost approximately $362 million. We're hoping to get most of that money on a loan from Potter County. So with, with the tax abatement, what we're proposing is that, and obviously this is a subject negotiation at a later point between the county and Mike, but just in ballpark numbers, we would be paying the tax in lieu of, so with $362 million worth of property being put on the land, the property tax is so high, there's no way to build the project. And so we're proposing an abatement under which the county would get $327,000 every year during the 10 years of the bid, then as opposed to the $3,240 the county gets now, and then after the 10 years, it would be the full property tax on the benefit of the project. Project have a useful life, 25 years, but we've seen in many of these projects, they get passed and renewed after 15 to 20 years until it's abroad and then passed. So we would anticipate that that might be the case here also. One of the benefits of our location. So on the, on our, in our pasture is the PTA Spoke Substation, which connects to the ERCOT grid. The ERCOT grid serves 90% of the population of Texas, and there's a steady increase in demand for electric power in Texas, not only due to the increase in population, but of course, additional electric vehicles. And also in ERCOT grid, local power and light is going to join ERCOT grid in 2021. That brings an additional demand of 500 megawatts. And a lot of the coal-fired plants are shutting down because of the, the cost of the energy emissions are giants. And so there's a need for additional power in the grid, and Potter County has high property taxes, and so that's one of the reasons that renewable projects aren't being had in Potter County. We think it would be a good idea to do a renewable project in Potter County in this particular location, having the substation on, on site is a benefit because you don't have a long way to go to transfer the power again to the substation. If the power needed is, is not generated in Texas, then ERCOT will import the power from other states, and those states will then get the property taxes and the jobs that are related to the center of the power. Two projects that were, so anyway, so that's. So Carol Solar is going to be on 1,450 acres of 12,000 acre pasture. It's a 220.5 megawatt solar generation project, which will have 640,000 solar panels and 72 inverters, and it's expected to provide enough electricity to serve the needs of 42,000 households per year. As I mentioned, it would have a 25-year useful life. Carol Wind is on 10,000 acres of that same pasture, basically, this is the land that we've shown you pictures of. It's a 169.2 megawatt wind generation project, and will have 60 wind turbines, and of course, familiar foundations and so forth. We plan to collect the collection of cables underground, so that we won't have overhead transmission lines that could break the house by. Obviously, I guess, to the HJ Spoke Substation, then, then it's on their transmission lines. It would, this project would provide the energy, the 49,000 households in a year. Expect to start construction of the solar Carol Solar in July of this year, and Carol Wind is intended this year. Obviously, that's a adjustment, including all of the various things that need to be done before the construction starts, but that's the current schedule. As peak activity, Carol, ERCOT and Carol Wind each would employ approximately 150 construction workers, and obviously, they would come from the local community. And then when the projects are done, they don't require a lot of full-time people. There'd be one full-time onsite manager and four hourly employees, and those will all be local. So the benefit to the county is you've got a big increase in the property tax base, but now a lot of increase in the services that have gotten required. Officials and manufacturing plant, 2,000 employees, and we have all the school, all the various services that you need, whereas this is really a very high asset type of project with very low demand of annual income services. Suppose one of the things you might want to know is what, what do we take likely taxes after the first 10 years, and why can we leave the payment in the first 10 years? The reason is that we're going to have to get somebody to provide the money to finance this project, and, and they want to get their money back in the first 10 years, and if you've got lummels, hard flyers, lung pains, and after the first 10 years, those payments we made, then the project can stand the full county property taxes. And so that's why we're proposing a payment for the first 10 years, and then the full county property taxes. We think in the last year, if you use current rates, current values, property taxes will be a little over $500,000. We're proposing each year up to that to pay $327,000, which is a big, big increase, over $3,240 that we've paid in 2018.
Are there exemptions on the property, pardon?
I'm sorry.
Are there exemptions, like an agricultural exemption that sits on there?
Yes, it's initially, yes, so it's paying the taxes based on, on the agricultural use of.
Would those exemptions change as a result of this project?
Yes, as, yes and no. As to the solar, solar, Carol Solar, the panels take up the land, so, so that, it will be agricultural anymore.
Right.
On the wind turbines, the wind turbine just has a foot, small footprint, and so the cattle can still use the rest of the land around the wind turbine, so that the land where, which the cattle are using would still be agricultural, and it still, you know, we, we get like $5 an acre a year for, it's not, it doesn't generate a lot of income, so.
So the only part where the exemption will be lifted is where the actual equipment resides?
Yes.
Am I understanding that correctly?
I think that's right, is that right, Mike?
Yes, sir, that's correct. On the land.
On, on the land, just, and so for the, for the winter, it's not a big area that would be changed, it mostly would still be agricultural, it mostly still had cattle.
Interesting, okay, thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt your question.
No, I'm sorry, I was just looking to see, I mean, I'm glad you asked, anytime you have questions.
I have a few more, but I'll, I'll certainly let you finish.
Sure, that's great, no, that's great. Well, I think that, I think that is the principal thing that I wanted to say outside. So Swinford Wind, which was a project for 500 megawatts, wind turbines, which was kind of going to the HJ Spoke Substation, they were talking to us about getting an easement across our land to do that, and they canceled that project, even not being able to figure out a way to make it economic. So the economics of these projects is, is very tough, and that's, that's exactly why the need is, and of course, we're also, we've taken the step necessary to get production tax credits for the wind and also investment tax credits for the solar, and even taking all that into account, we can't do this project if we don't get property tax abatement for the county. Yes, okay, so now, the question, I'll bet this down from the three hours.
Okay.
Is this going to be located north of the Tascosa Road, or south?
That is north of the, here, I, I would mind directions, not great, if it's on the right-hand side of Tascosa Road.
It's really the only of the road that you'll be needing to access your property.
Is that right? Well, so, so the Burlington North of Santa Fe Road has a line that goes directly across our property, and then Gentry Switch is on our property, there's a mile and a half side track where a train can pull off and park, and so we're currently discussing with Burlington to use that, and of course, this is their benefit too, because it ships on Burlington. We don't have an agreement yet on that, but that's why that's there, so you can park a train and unload it and haul it out, and so if we, if we're able to do that, we'll deliver everything on the train directly to the property. If we can't do that, then it'll have to go by the trucks.
Trucks, like.
And we would obviously be willing to entertain an agreement if the truck stands the road to Texas.
But I don't think there's any county roads that would be a problem. As far as I know, it's just the Tascosa Road.
The farm, we got the Farm to Market, which is Tascosa, and then there's one other.
Werschland Road also.
Werschland Road also.
It's a state road, too.
Yes.
Yes, so could you help me understand, I know you mentioned 362 million is what you have in your proposal?
Yes, as an estimated project cost, yes.
Project cost. Help me understand what, what is that is, I'm assuming the majority of it is the actual equipment.
Yes.
Right? Could you help separate the two divisions of what's going up, the solar versus any type of equipment? Help me understand what it's going to look like.
So.
As best as you can.
Yeah, the reason it's in a, in a big number like that, as opposed to saying, this is the construction cost, this is the cost of the turbines and so forth, is that we, we have non-disclosure agreements, because most people don't want other people to know what we're paying for the turbines, you know, and, and the same with the solar panels, because they're selling them to other people too, and so they get the same kind of agreements with them. So we can tell you the total cost, but I can't tell you this much for the turbines and this much for the solar panels at the, at the present time because of.
Yeah, I'm certainly not looking for proprietary information, but when you enter a public space, you know, asking for a payment, it does enter different territory for questions on financials and such, so not so, at least proprietary.
What I, what I might, what I might say is during the process of getting into the payment, we can work with the county as well as the folks that we are negotiating with and try to issue.
I think in a private setting, we can give you that information. I think we can't do it here in a public setting, where it goes everywhere.
Okay, so I've got 362 million as of right now, what's called the project, is that fair to lump that in currently?
Yes.
Okay. And then you have in your exhibit, currently what you pay on taxes, which is bare to nothing because it's got the agricultural exemption on it, which is what it is.
It doesn't earn a lot of money.
Yeah, doesn't earn a lot, it's just what a lot of people do quite honestly, right? That agricultural exemption is on it.
Right.
Once the equipment goes up, I'm trying to get a real appreciation for what that value will look like, if the exemption still, I'm imagining the majority of the footprint is still going to have quite a bit of exemption on it, other than the actual equipment that sits on throughout the.
When the equipment sits on the property.
Right, that, yes, yes, so I don't have an appreciation for, is that 15 pieces of equipment, 30, 100, is it worth it? But I'm not in your field, so I just.
So there's going to be 69 wind, 60 wind turbines, I'm sorry, 60 wind turbines, and there's going to be 640,000 solar panels. And 72 inverters, and then of course, you're going to have the foundations, you're going to have the collection cables, and I mean, I don't know where all the stuff is.
Sure.
And there's going to be. And there's going to be a collection station where the, where it's into, and so there'll be some buildings.
Commissioner Church, this is an air proceeding, is that correct?
Yes.
I don't have an appreciation for the footprint and how close that is to residential area. Not need to worry about that. I'm just asking because I'm just asking questions.
Yeah, I can put that.
Yeah, I have, and I have the exhibit, yeah, I have the exhibit, I just.
There's no houses.
I continue to be surprised on where houses are that I didn't expect them to be.
Yes, no, 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 there's going to be, I, you know, there certainly could.
Yes, yeah, okay.
Absolutely, sure.
Okay, so you'll have this big footprint potentially out there with a sixty wind, six hundred and forty solar, seventy-two inverters. And I know those are fluid numbers that may change based on your project. Around three hundred and sixty-two million project cost, about a year plus to get the project done. But the employees that you mentioned, there'll be one project manager in full hour that, that will stay in full build.
That's when the project is built, like during construction.
Right, you'll have the, the.
Each of the projects will, at the peak level, will have a hundred and fifty employees that.
Do you have any pro forma ready to be distributed to the court around what the tax base will then look like once all of this inventory is now on the property?
Yes, yes. That's on the, that's basically what's on the screen right now.
Okay.
So the way these, the solar and wind are valued a little differently as far as their price looks your side. And the solar, the depreciation schedule set by the state. So it'll appreciate going a hundred percent of the cost, depreciate ten percent a year, basically now to, it's down to twenty percent in a ten-year. It can be lower or some perpetuity, it'll be on the tax levels at twenty percent of the original cost. The wind is a different animal, it's, it's valued at, at cost. And then once done there, I think that'd be the next schedule placed on the solar and the wind straight behind appreciation at around five percent. So the, the total appreciation rate, I believe, on there is maybe eight percent a year, give or take for both top assets.
Okay. If we get a copy of that, I don't think we have that in our backup.
Yes, this is for you.
Yes.
Okay, yes, this is the most valuable piece that I'm, I'm looking.
And those are, and those are, those are projections, taxable, that's just taxable, not, not fully listed, not with tax.
Yeah. If we can get this as a follow-up, and then I'm assuming you've done projects of this scale before in other areas? What is a comparable county that we could look at for some homework and due diligence?
There, there's counties like Carson County, and Gray County.
Oldham County. Some of us can suggest that we take, okay, to make sure we get credit.
We just don't do these often enough, so.
We never did.
Yeah, well, we just don't do tax abatements in general. And obviously, it's a tool we protect as a court. We've never done this, to your point, Commissioner, so I just, you know, make sure we're asking the right questions and being diligent about that. As you heard in our previous discussion, we have revenue caps that are putting some pressure on our budget that nobody can see in this magnitude in Texas. So it's a unusual time, right?
This is going to help.
In the long game, yes, but we're in the short game right now, we're trying to stop, you know, stop the reaction to that.
And one of the things, and my thing's going to be better, is that I am upsetting office areas. It's a little bit dangerous for me to start a tax. So by doing a hundred percent tax abatement with payment in lieu of taxes, that helps your situation in terms of maximum tax rate.
When you make the tax rate test basis, because basically the particular item would not figure into this. And that's law, yeah.
And that's why the three hundred, that's why the seven thousand we're talking about is a payment in lieu.
So your request is a hundred percent at ten years, is that correct?
And also, the, the value after the, I believe the value after the ten-year period, I mean, you're like around probably seventy-two million dollars. But though, so.
Yeah, that's a helpful. Ted, tell me, what is conditional approval? That's not language I normally see on any of our tax abatements. So just because we've not been briefed, I don't think a member of this court has sponsored this particular agenda. I, I want to be careful around this, please.
Tax payment law, that's one of the ones that changes in last legislative session. And in order for a project like this to proceed, there is this mission of the application that there has to be reinvestment sum created. And the ultimate approval of the agreement, the abatement agreement, has to have a thirty-day notice period. So right now, you are simply accepting the application for the tax abatement. You're not actually acting on the tax abatement that comes once we set it for a final, at least thirty days down the road. So that's, we're, we're, the change is because the law has changed a bit in the end. And we have not done a tax abatement of this sort. We've used, the, the previous tax abatement we did was more of a municipal reinvestment sum and, and economic development project. This is a straight-line tax abatement involving reinvestments, which is different than what we've done.
So a conditional approval to me, of the outside looking in, tells me, given the general nod and we're just working on logistics.
You're, yeah, generally, what you're saying is you've accepted the, the application as being a new form and providing the information the county needs and authorizing the various departments of the county for negotiations in order to try and reach a mutually acceptable.
I, I'll just speak for the court. I don't know that I'm, well, I'll speak for myself, not for the court. I, I don't know that I'm there. I think there's some homework that we need to do prior to, since this is the first time this adjutant item has come for the full court.
So are you saying that you would rather wait for you receiving the application because?
No, I'm fine receiving it. I'm just not fine taking a formal motion for condition, conditional approval, which gives a nod saying, we generally kind of agree we're doing some type of deal, we're just working on what the deal looks like. That I'm not comfortable with until we do some homework, but.
What language would you rather have of the?
I mean, we can just, to review, normally, we just, you know, in this particular, we just to review it, but we don't do this often. So obviously, you see us struggling on the court, right?
No, but I, I see the advantages of these renewable energy projects and color surrounding counties and what is done for them. I don't see what our big concern is as long as we get the contract right. Talk to some of our neighboring counties that are in it. And I, I wouldn't see us go ahead, because I think it's a great deal.
On the ground, Commissioner, and I would make a motion that we accept the tax abatement application.
Second.
You're saying with the conditional approval, is that what both of you were saying? So an extra understanding of the motion.
Yeah, I think, I think they were.
Is that? I think the, the use of conditional language means you're not ultimately approving the tax abatement. You're approving acceptance of the application and potential negotiation.
But is it, but would you agree, Scott, it's a general nod that we are in negotiation? And we are, we've given a, a handshake agreement that we're moving in that direction. That's what the motion is on the floor, is that correct? With a twenty-minute presentation, no homework done?
Yes.
Okay, just clarified.
Okay, I have a motion in a second on vagor, if you can. Opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Archer's Office to recognize, not doing this on purpose, I wrote it all out, so I can read it all out so everyone will know the importance of this. To recognize, the Archer's Office has once again been awarded to Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for the twenty-fifth year in our row. This is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. C A F R has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the highest standards of the program, which is a demonstration of the spirit of bold disclosure. To clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to renew this C A F R. Carrie, congratulations, one more time, do you have your staff? Have you received a certificate yet?
Yes. Five years?
Twenty-five years.
Five years.
She started when she was five. All right, number twelve, Potter County Drug Court Resolution to recognize the resolution for the twenty-twenty Drug Court operating in the one only first district court. Good morning. Can you tell us how it's going? Going good?
Yeah, absolutely, just been in our fifth year. Like what the governor had, we had a program across two thousand and ten. We are at a success rate of about seventy-four percent, and statewide, it's seventy-six percent. So we're right in the neighborhood state average. Because, but also, when you look at the numbers, we have a higher number of high-risk offenders than most of the state, and we have about thirty-six percent high-risk offenders. Most of the state's about ten percent.
What do you consider a high risk?
We do what's called a toxic risk assessment on every individual we get off the location. It's always classified with offenders from low, low-arrive, high-arrive, high-risk. When we do that, what we're looking at is you take certain things into account, neighborhoods, family, family peers, community, all that's addressed.
Do y'all have any questions?
Are there any lessons learned as a result of it?
You mean by us or defenders?
Well, maybe both. Maybe, maybe a question for both.
Well, you know, yeah, I guess the lesson that I learned is you can't always, you can't always judge somebody from first appearance to fourth. You know, sometimes you think it's got to be really successful, then it comes out unsuccessful. Well, this one's not going to make it, and they are, they do make it, you know? So as far as the offenders go, I think lessons learned absolutely. Every day, we have hearings, not every day, but Friday, we have hearings with offenders. And so when their behavior is a lot of, or in other words, they're given certain conditions to have to comply with. When they don't, their sanctions stay there. So it's different than regular probation in the fact that we see them once a month. With this, we see them once a week, so sanctions are immediate. So yeah, I take lessons, definitely learn about offenders.
Just for the record, would you state your name of the court here?
Oh, your name.
And, and where you, where you're employed?
I'm going to have your address for the.
Okay, I just want to make sure you asked the question. Thank you very much.
Just one thing I do want to make clear on the, on the, I just, on the revocation, the actual grant application numbers incorrect, the last number should be seven versus six. So it should be two, seven, six, one, six, zero, seven.
I move to approve the Barker County Drug Court Resolution as presented.
Do we have to vote on this, just to recognize? Do you ensure we have it approved?
Approved the resolution.
Okay, all right. Okay, you have a motion?
Mr. Speaker.
And a second on vagor, if you can.
Thank you for your.
Thank you. Okay, number thirteen, equipment purchase, Sheriff's Office to consider an act upon the purchase of a Dell related to seven-four-seven-two computer and docking station. Total amount is two thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars, funds to complement equipment here in many nights. Morning, County.
What are you doing?
Computer broke, you know. I'm on your stall.
Hey, sure, sure.
Yeah.
Turned out to be seven-sixty. This is one part of the computer.
And any part to here? And Sheriff, if you don't have anything in your budget to offset it, it needs to come from equipment repair home base account? How much is in that account, Carrie, with the equipment? And just to confirm from our I T side, we don't have anything in inventory that we could rotate in until budgets like?
Move to approve the purchase of the Dell Latin seven-four-seven-two computer and docking station.
Motion, second on vagor, if you can.
Quick clarification, do you, do we need to state where the funds are coming from, or is that a lie, Carrie, or? Or, yeah, okay, thank you.
Hold the paper. Number fourteen, illegal purchase to consider an act upon Sheriff's proposed purchase of the twenty-nineteen Ford Fusion automobile funded by insurance proceeds in federal accident channel. There's nothing in.
I don't think this needs court approval. The only thing that we need approval from the court is to fund the insurance on it, which is three hundred and forty dollars a year.
But isn't it replacing one, or we're adding to the fleet?
It's coming out of the forfeiture funds, from the forfeiture funds. So we'll take an insurance check that we got from the, the tolls one.
Right.
For thirteen thousand, thirty-eight dollars, thirty-one cents. And then out of the forfeiture fund for adding five thousand, nine hundred eighty-six dollars and seventy cents.
Right.
As far as your insurance that was covered, they did cover the one before.
Yes.
Right, but the insurance that you're talking about, is this to ensure the vehicle moving forward?
Yes, so it'll take one, one that's coming off the insurance.
Okay, so it's not adding to the fleet?
No.
Okay, thank you. So this does not need approval, is that what you're saying, Chris?
The insurance for you, for the county to cover the insurance, we need, you guys? Yeah?
I move to approve.
If they can put the downside.
Okay, just. There's no downside.
I move to approve the Sheriff's proposed purchase of the twenty-nineteen Ford Fusion automobile with County Supply Insurance. Sir. The amount of the insurance. The amount of the insurance.
Three hundred and forty dollars a year.
Okay, I have a motion, second on vagor, if you can. Thank you, Sheriff. Number fifteen, adjustment of police state's District Attorney's Office in Boy's Cell to consider an act upon a request, District Attorney to attest to allegations of certain boards that have changed to District Attorney's queue on the stacking budget in the eighth day, which is one nine twenty twenty. Morning.
Good morning. What's happened is there's a company's secretary as well, and, or the company's secretary as well, investigators. And so rehired the money at the level of the revenue, just as enough of the money in these departments. And I'm just adjusting to this now, it's like, no extra money is needed. So just, so sparsely unused funds in salary count.
Are those positions that will not be revealed? Are those positions that will not be revealed?
Will not be.
Will not be revealed? The ones that are left and you're going to use that money?
No, 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 no. We feel an empty spot. We have, we have the investigator's spot, we have the secretary's. We are only have to go here, the mobile, and then both of them. And so I'm taking the salary safe, additional funds that were above those two salaries to spread out to the other people in the salary safe.
I will say it again, we need to stop this bleed. We, we did this the last five years. I say we start right now, I'm not doing it ever again. This is unfair to other, other departments who have smaller, smaller number of people. They'll never get raises like this ever in a major year. I just think it's unfair, and I'm going to say no.
Are you saying that you want to say no to this tonight?
Anybody, anybody to come to court to ask for this issue, I'm saying no, because I, I just think it's unfair and I think it's going to get, it's going to be so. Your people are one of the highest-paid people in the county. You can't compare your secretaries to what mine make. They're way above. So if we ever do have a salary survey, these people doing the salary surveys, maybe we've lost our minds. Because the difference in pay.
The money is already in the budget even in that.
Keep it in the budget. How about giving it back? You hire somebody? That's just my statement, and I'm saying.
Yes, I'm trying to clarify, you indicating that you are using this deny him as of today or after this report?
As of today.
And then the rule is what you said.
Yeah. That's just my opinion, so you guys have one?
Hello? Well, I have, I have an opinion, obviously, around this topic all the time. And this is a slippery slope that I have brought up every time, so no one should be surprised that this is where we sit. I'm obviously very uncomfortable. Um, I'm obviously very uncomfortable with this. We felt this in a very difficult way during budget, there's a lot of emotion in that. I echo, they should have stopped many years ago.
I mean, we can follow this one. So we can't spend money on this story.
Um, reallocating is different, right? I think that's what you're calling out, Judge, especially as it relates to employee salaries, because, um, it's not an apples and apple, apple to apple comparison countywide, right?
It's not, it's not personal, um, anything against these people. It's just, three or four times a year, you come to the court and do this. Other, other departments did, we did last year, other departments stood too. I'm just way out of line.
But historically, I'm going to say that. I don't think we ought to ever get to the point. What's happened to our education system, everything else, we try to get everybody at the same pay level. And I just don't think that works. Because it doesn't incentivize anybody to do better. But. I'm, I'm willing to listen to what everyone's got to say.
I want to listen to what, uh, what Raylan has to say. And I make sure that we understand, vote on this and vote by the judge, and sit down and declare a call that it's stopped today.
In light of the fact that our three point five revenue cap is coming, I, I just don't see how.
So do you just have a problem with going off budget?
Because I'm only increasing budget, so you can't.
Right.
It doesn't increase his budget, we're talking zero budget. So it's just redistrict.
And we've always said.
I know.
If we don't want to micromanage, you know, it's a little bit of a lag.
I guess, I'd like the court, I ask the court clerk, Scott, I address this issue. And you know that this, the court has an act of unlimited floor, it's a micro management, others in the department. I think for you. I would rather look at the sitting table. This is either the two of Scott.
The court does have the advantage of controlling the budget.
These are budgets, I understand that these are budgeted funds. And the court, once the budget's approved, does not have the authority to micromanage.
And I want to be careful with that word, because we are not micromanaging. We did not ask for a list of employees' names, that in my opinion is.
I did.
Okay, I did not ask for a list of employees' names, they have numbers for all I care, right? Scott, whenever we posted the budget, we made this change, I want to say three years ago, roughly. Based on how we present the budget is what allows us to now start to discern, um, salary line items, is that correct? Do y'all remember that correctly?
To, to back up, the basic lay of the land is. The court's authority mid-year to control how various elected officials use the money allocated to their salary fund. Depends on how the official county budgeting is. If it is prepared as a series of specific line items for each job, then every time somebody wants to adjust a position, we have to come back to Commissioner's Court to get approval. Generally speaking, if it is a lump sum assigned to each department, that restricts in some measure the court's authority to, to control how elected officials use the resources you put at their disposal. So the more specific the budget is, the greater control you have. Now, uh, I understand what you're saying, I understand what's being said, there, there will always be the highly charged, uh, assertion that when the Commissioner's Court says no, they're micromanaging when control is more specific. Uh, as opposed to generalized. You, uh, that's an emotional argument, not necessarily a, a true statement. Yeah, that's the lay of the land.
Sure.
The more specific the budget is, the more control the Commissioner's Court exercises throughout the budget.
Okay, so I think that's an appropriate takeaway to add in terms of if we'd like to table, and you guys bet it. But, um, Scott, I would like to request a recommendation in terms of knowing our own house, right? Knowing what we wrestle with in the specificity around salary line items in particular. What changes we need to make as a court, whether to tighten up control or loosen up? Two easy calls, right, in terms of a budget presentation to prep for next year. Because we continue to get here, and I have felt this eight years in, so I, I just still don't know how we're here.
Uh, I, well, again, I can, we can discuss the specifics of specific line item budgeting versus generic lump sum budgeting. That, of course, the decision about which of those two is more appropriate is policy of the Commissioner's.
Correct, but if we could have that level of detail so we can make an educated decision, again, the budget will change, right, moving into this next fiscal year. So we are very clear that we're presenting a budget, so we are clear about our authority.
Maybe, I, I think I may have misunderstood you. We are happy to work with, uh, hearing, with the judge, with, in the course of pre, uh, preparation of the budget. To, if, help effectuate whatever policy direction the court wants to go on that. Uh, but as far as whether you want to go line items, uh, increased control throughout the year, or lump sum, decreased control throughout the year, that's a call that the court has to make.
Okay.
One of my concerns is, is when you indicated that you want to stop this toward it right now, now, uh, you know, things change in our county. And I don't know that you can, that you want to do that restrict from now on, and I think you might have to take it item by item.
I think it's clear right now, you said today, I don't have an issue.
I don't, I don't want to micromanage these departments, I don't want to micromanage these departments, these people are elected to these offices, and I think they, uh, they have the right and the authority to break it for the court.
Ask the, ask the people that are sitting on there right now, that all they have three people in their office, and they're able to get a chance to do this. And the president. So their salaries stay here, and everyone else goes up and down, and it's not, it's not. Okay, so, kind of interesting. Take that as a discussion?
That's, that's.
Right, you said you would take that as a discussion, is that right, Ted? Or remind me what you said a few minutes?
If you want to further rip the counsel, yes, then you could table it, come back in two weeks.
Two weeks.
That's yours.
I move to table for two weeks. Usually else.
Okay.
I have a motion to table two weeks. On vagorization. Number sixteen, twenty twenty Census Committee, keep an eye on updates on the twenty twenty census committee account.
So this, I wanted to just provide a couple of updates to the court around the census, um, some calendar dates, and then you have an item that looks like a map in your back, in your backup, your packet, and I'll talk through that in just a second. Uh, but now that we're in the thick of, uh, twenty twenty, the municipalities have all gotten together to prep for the census. Obviously, this is another national topic around the census. Uh, there's a lot of dialogue, that we should be counted, we should not be counted, there's obviously got a lot of rhetoric around citizenship question that is not included on the census now, but, um, it, I, I, I hope I'm at liberty to say what we're discussing in the committee is, obviously, there's a, there's a fear for people completing the census. What that means to us as a governing body that manages dollars, everything is based on who lives in our county, right, our population count. So, um, I think back to what Commissioner Church has commented, there's a whole philosophical dialogue around what you believe, but you know that every grant that we apply for comes down to where is our population count? Everything is driven based on that, as well as dollars that we receive back to our city and our county. So, uh, a couple of dates that I want to get on your calendar, and then I, I want to make an ask of this court for potentially one of, one of you to join on our census committee. By March thirty-first, there's going to be a big press release, I don't have a date yet, but once I have that, um, I'll pass that along. Where everyone kind of gets together, really a, a, a bipartisan ship by municipality to, to work together for the citizenship, or I'm sorry, for the census. Uh, April first is the census day. Uh, so that's something that you want to mark on your calendar. The City of Amarillo is hosting a, uh, website, there will be a launch coming up here in the near future around, um, all of the documentation that will be used to help, whether it's marketing material, those kind of things. Um, sometime in January, there, there will be a recruitment fair, and I think there's a partnership with the Census and the Texas Workforce Commission, I've heard, I think it might be at the Civic Center. And these are for actual field workers that will be knocking on doors to have people fill out the census. Um, from a national level, what's different than twenty ten is there's a big, big budget cut. Um, they're banking, for lack of a better word, on quite a few people filling it out online. What that means to us in Potter County, I mean, we, we know it's quite a bit of our rural population that maybe doesn't have strong bad connectivity, we just need to be aware of that. There's a cut in field workers, so these are the employees on the ground that knock on the door, if you don't fill it out, there's a cut in that. A lot of, um, counties, cities have started to apply for grants and even throw their own dollars in to help offset that, because the impact of that is just so costly for the next ten years. We have not put any money in, City of Amarillo has not put any money in. Um, and so there's a grant that's coming up, that I know Carrie is helping and her team to try to just help us get our hands on some type of dollars to help offset some of these costs. So just, I wanted to share some of the things coming out of that committee, you'll start to see this maybe as a standing agenda item coming through, because April is right around the corner. So the map that you have in your backup, you'll see those white dots? What those are is those are, um, a screenshot of twenty ten census, and those are pockets of high undercount areas. So high, there's a high density of people that were not counted in that area. And so I thought that was a good visual for us, because we're used to looking at our county maps. So there are, there, there is a main census committee, and then there are subcommittees. So what I wanted to do is extend an invitation to this whole body to see if there was another member of this court that wants to join some of these subcommittees, or even the main committee. Um, I'd be happy to work with you after and deep review. Um, it's basically a meeting every couple of weeks, but it really is knowing your precincts. And so I wanted to give you a map so that you have visual. Uh, there's a lot in, in North Heights area, you'll see some of that. Um, they found some areas in, uh, precinct one as well. So I just, I know everybody has individual calendars and schedules and other competing priorities, elections, you name it. Um, is there an appetite for anybody to join this work? Because we certainly need your help. Lots of information.
I will second the default on that, if no commissioner wants to.
I've got a little activity going on right now, so I would have to.
Okay. Commissioner Church, you have a ten second.
Oh, I'm, I just have a, you know, I've talked about this before, I'm concerned about the census, it's not a total responsibility, it's a federal responsibility, and they're, they're the ones that should be taking the lead. That's very obvious, and I, I've reminded them never to put any local money towards census.
Uh, Commissioner, could I ask a follow-up question to that? I, I would agree a hundred percent, which doesn't always happen to you now, so I love saying that out loud. Um, that it's a national responsibility, uh, what happens when that doesn't take place, right? Because where, where the buck stops is at this very local level.
I think your, your court should, uh, cause the fitness to back off. You know? Every person is ready to do it, it's been through years and years, as long as we've been a country. But Jeff, we have this argument going on about whether or not we can, we know that our people who live here are citizens. How ridiculous is that? That's, that's a very obvious question. I back off too.
So, um, in particular around the funding cuts is, and so do you think on a local level, we have no responsibility, and we say they should have done it, and they say, well, your local people should have done it, and we turn into it?
In my opinion, yes, but that's just my.
Sure, no, that's fair, that's, I'm interested in hearing that.
I know, but it's a whole phrase, how it should have looked at.
Right.
It's not, it's not going to fall out of there. It's going to be done. It's always been done. It's just done a little different maybe, but, uh, some people.
In terms of an accurate account, or an inaccurate account, is that what you're saying, or the academic exercise?
Yeah, I like being accurate, because we won't know who's is. It's always going to be.
Account, the, the actual people that live, or, or, and, and the hat that I have on is the services that we have to provide, right? Our emergency services in particular.
Let me just go with Billy.
Okay, you've got it, okay, thank you.
Let's just open up the orders and let everybody in.
Well, that's a whole different topic, Commissioner, and we'll take that one for a different day. Okay, thank you, Judge.
Number seventeen, employment items, consider an act upon the all-inclusive employment hours. Election temporary employment upon, uh, part-time, car, uh, two, six, temporary employment by rejection, like on both, like, January sixth. Temporary former employment home base, part-time part, uh, January sixth, and a temporary permanent working day home base, part-time part, uh, January sixth. And if still these men as the employment of deal are all month as custodian one, Dave's as a replacement for Susan, uh, Lassano, effective January twenty four, twenty twenty.
I make a motion that we examine employment access possession.
Sir.
I have a motion, second on vagorization. Potter County Projects, Mr. Wade.
Let's see if I can stir a bit. All right, I just have a kind of a list to go over a couple of things. So, we're going to meet with Mike Fuller, Commissioner Maria got a meeting set up with, herself, Carrie, me. Judge on the fifteenth, so what I've got to say on that.
And he won Coach of the Year, just so you guys know that. They, they won the championship too, I believe, yeah. Awesome. Anyway, sorry.
No, you're good. So we'll have financials and everything that they've done. I did. We've been, we've been kind of dealing with this parking topic, I guess, kind of. Chris and I, managing the. Went and did some recon on current parking situations and future possibilities. Uh, he was able to get a list of active employees in both quarters, current number of employees and changes parking spots. It's right at a hundred and fifty, between two, a hundred and fifty stalls. Uh, we went over it twice, well, together once, by myself, once. Into the parking garage, kind of counted some stalls. Uh, both times, there was a lot of empty stalls, so eighty-six on Monday, ninety-eight on the next. Yeah, empty. And ten AM and then ten twenty AM, so eighty-six empty on the seventh, the ten, ninety-eight empty, the ten twenty on the eighth. And, uh. I don't know, I think we have a nice car. I don't know what else to say.
You, you think when we close that lot over there, that, that might.
I think it's going to fill up. Uh, the only available parking lot downtown, close to where people, you know, people work. Uh, most buildings is just north of the Haring Bay. We spoke with them, I said, yeah, you're welcome to park there, but so is everybody else, they don't, it's unregulated, it's not strived. Uh, several of our employees currently parked there and have been for a while, it's just first come, first served. So. We have a hundred and fifty employees, we have a hundred and fifty spots. I think that probably fixes it up. Uh, we also went and met with the city traffic and planning people, we're going to have an update later this week. Uh, issuing contractor parking, so what the project can talk, so we don't have contractors parking on there. Next court will have an update from HOK. They submitted, uh, fifty percent of design development documents to the. documents to the third-party cost estimator, so just a good time to make sure we're on foot. So we'll, we'll, we'll have a good, a good report next, next court. Marcus McCooper at the fire station, as of right now, still on budget, small numbers have, have moved a little bit, but no problem numbers, what was that? I think that's all I have.
Could I get any, regular, but some briefings on, I could, I think we've pulled a little bit.
Yeah, yeah. We're going, we're going to give, we're going to give one on twenty seven, kind of where we're at, what our next steps are, we'll have a, I would say, an award before, so that everyone knows where we're at, where we're moving.
Um, how soon before that court will we get the presentation materials and follow-up questions to that?
We meet with the committee the afternoon of the twenty second, so.
Will we perform it?
It will be a full week, yeah, five, five days, so. Well, I don't know about, run back to my office, I'll write an email, so, four or five days.
Okay, any questions for?
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Jail report, today we had five hundred and sixty people in our jail, and our county includes females, and they're in the jail, eighty-six percent are felons, six percent are misdemeanor cases. I want the county insurance items, everything, county breaks.
Second, social, what are the agenda items for next time? Judge, one of my ideas, we had all the residents out there of the higher range.
I think that's what I was hoping to add, the higher range, what's going to be, you know?
Is it still a safety concern? Or is the safety concern runaway?
I think the safety concern is still there.
So what are we going to do? From the citizens that are.
I wish I could have done it right now.
You're called.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding. I'm just, I mean, I guess I'm just glad that something happened. That's obviously the head that I have, I'm glad that something happened for a resident after a family member, or child, or you name it, and that won't go, there's a patient, we've got the sheriff on the record.
To, to be fair, it's, it's y'all's, it's in y'all's court.
Right.
But it's also, there's also a part of that that in the landowners' court as well, and they have.
Right, which is to hire a private counsel, which we know they can't afford based on, I mean, they have said that, we can't afford to all hire a fancy attorney that's going to go against them, right? They have said that in public court for the most part. So I just, I'm just calling out, I forbid something happen, they live in our county, they come to court.
So Sheriff, do you have anything new since that briefing with, we hear that you presented the court given information, not really, I mean, it's still, still there, you know that Commissioner Decker was out there one day, looking through the place, and I think there were some comments made of shooting cans or something off the pavement or off of the police here, and the guy, I wasn't there, but you can expand on that kind of topic, but you're not here to, uh, talking about, can't be shooting cans out here, we didn't have a roof, that's coming from one of their, their people out there. We have been up there since then on some shots fired, and they are, they did have, at the time that I know of, they did have a, a instructor out there, a green master out there on the, on the side. So do you have any serious concerns for safety?
I think we probably ought to add this to the next gen, I think we're getting a little far afield, but.
Thank you, totally. Yeah, so I'm just, I'm just bringing that up for. Okay, good. Next time, please. Okay, there's nothing else we ordered.